Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 27 Newton Planning Board. I'm the chairman, Michael Andrews. Good to have you here. Just for your benefit, I'm going to explain how the process goes real quick. I'll open the public hearing for you and then I'll have you say some words about it. We'll ask the circuit rider who is coming in on Zoom, anything that she has. I'll open up for questions from the board. If there was anybody in the public, then I would have them and then we'll kind of wrap it up there. Okay? All right. There's nothing else other than two alternates.
You can put one in place of Mr. Lavoy and one in place of Mr. White.
Okay, Mr. Marshan for Mr. White and Mr. Zalinski for Mr. Lavoy. So you guys will be voting. And then we have Barbara, Ms. White, as a voting member via Skype. Okay? So we have six. Okay. Public hearing, a continuance of the public hearing for Teresa and Scott Goat of Newton, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for a home-based business selling seafood at 109 North Main Street, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 9, Block 3, Lot 6. And I hand it over to you, Mr. Goat, and if you can sadly, so it can be recorded.
Okay.
Thank you.
Reason why I wanted to start this business is because I'm caring for my 91-year-old elderly mother and during the week she goes to a day program. During the week she goes to a day program, but on the weekend she doesn't. So I'm stuck at home and when I could be working if I wanted to. I mean, the opportunity is there. So I figured I would try to find something else to do to offset the fact that I can't work on Saturdays and Sundays unless it's at home.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about how your setup will be in... Obviously, you've seen what the requirements of home-based business.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So just tell us a little bit about your setup of how for the board, so we understand, okay, that meets the criteria.
Okay, what I have is I have 265-pound gallon, I mean, not quart, marine coolers.
Okay.
And what I'm going to do is I'm going to store the lobsters and the clams, of course, with Red Tide, there will be no clams, but hopefully that'll end soon. But until then, what I'm going to do is I'm going to put ice in the bottom and then there's going to be burlap on top of that soaked in salt water. And that helps to keep the lobsters alive. And then the lobsters will be on top of that and then another layer of burlap on top of that, and that's also for the clams as well. And then more ice on top of that, and that's how they'll be stored. I have a trade scale to weigh them and price them. And I'm going to operate it out of my apartment in the basement of my mother's house.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's good enough for now. So I'll hand it over to Ms. Rowden for any comments from the Rockingham Planning Commission.
Sure. Just a couple of questions I think might be helpful, but the rest was in my letter. About how many customers or about how many pounds, I guess, of lobster or clams would you envision selling on your best day?
I didn't hear that.
Or how many people do you think may...
How many customers do you expect on, say, your best, your busiest day?
Well, I was going to start out with 100, and it was with 100 lobsters.
Oh, okay.
But it was based on the fact that I was going to have clams to sell too, because I have the feeling the clams are going to be more popular.
Okay.
But I'm actually going to start out with a smaller amount than that on the first day just to see how it goes, because I don't know how much traffic is going to come by there, because I know most of the traffic goes down to Boston Road. But... And I'm on a blind, in a kind of a blind driveway, so I'm hoping that, you know, people will see the sign that I put out and, you know, and either stop or turn around and come back, you know?
Okay.
I have no idea how it's going to go the first day. I mean, I'm hoping for the best, but so I'm going to start out with 50.
The reason we ask these questions is we're mostly interested in what's the impact on the community, on your neighbors. So we'd be, if we were trying to put limits on something, it might be like, how many cars would be there at one time from a parking issue? And then I believe you put down hours.
Yeah, 12 to 6.
12 to 6, so that's a good... Now, we always make sure that is exactly what you want, because if you want more than that, you got to come back.
Come back, right.
So as we go forward, think about that. What else do you have, Ms. Rowden?
Well, my one other real comment, and this is more for the board's consideration, is if, at least in the application, it says the coolers will be stored outside of the building. The strict letter of your home occupation is that you don't have anything that's outside that makes it so it's platable. Given the limited number of hours and they're coolers, whether the board feels that that's the business being outside of the home for home occupancy. If the board does think that that sort of disqualifies the home occupancy, if it's possible for the coolers to be stored inside or undercover, would sort of alleviate that.
Were you able to hear that?
I could hear it, but I couldn't really make out what she was saying.
It's very poor.
Yeah, well, it's...
Sorry?
That's all right. This is a good meeting to work with this, because we're going to have to do this in the future. Essentially, one of the things she brought up is you mentioned that you'll have a table set up outside. The basic home occupancy or home business, nothing is supposed to be visible from the outside other than a small sign. So that's just something she was asking about, and that's for the board to decide. But describe for the board, if I'm a potential customer, say, I see a sign and it's like, oh, I want to get some lobsters. What am I going to see driving in and then there as, you know? Go me through the process of, I'm going to buy six lobsters.
Well, I have a nice wide driveway, which is a good thing for me because of being a blind driveway. Two cars could actually pull in parallel with the street, and that would be basically blocking my whole driveway. But my driveway itself is like six cars deep. So it's plenty deep enough for cars to park. Jim had told me about the limitations on the table and all of that. I thought maybe the table would be just for weighing them.
Okay.
And setting them on there while you collect the money and all of that. But the product will be inside the basement.
And I assume, other than during your business hours, there'd probably be nothing visible, other than potentially a sign?
No. No, the sign will be out during business hours and taken in at the end of the day, you know, once I'm done for the day.
Was there anything else, Ms. Rowden?
Nope, those are the main questions or concerns.
Okay. I'd like to open up to the board for any questions.
Ms... Oh, go ahead. Mr. Goat stated that he has a blind driveway and he's on a state road. Does, remember, we've had discussions before about having a business in your yard on the state road? Does he need to get any sort of permission from the state?
Typically, not for something that qualifies under home occupancy. The times that's come up before was when it was going to be a, recently, the hot dog cart on 108, just because that was a more intense restaurant use. This is just slated to be a home occupancy.
Okay. Is your... Go ahead, ask a question.
My question was, are you just relying on foot traffic or you're not going to...
I'm going to advertise on Facebook.
Right, all right. Yeah, I was just wondering, in the paper or...
No, just on Facebook.
On Facebook, oh, okay.
As we, any...
I guess I'm curious about this table that you're talking about. It would be kind of outside the door, is it...
Yeah, just outside the door.
Okay. So how big is the table?
It's one of those fold-up tables. It's like, you know, five, six feet long.
So similar to...
Yeah, similar to that, but it's one of the ones that folds up to about that big, you know?
So the... Yeah, okay. If you have the, there's a, I see the picture of it. So that's the walk-in basement.
Right.
Well, that, okay. I have a question from the driveway issue, and I understand you probably don't need a permit from the state. I did drive by the place, and I don't think it's going to be a problem in looking at your schematic. Is, do you foresee a way that cars could come in and park in such a way that when they left, they were not backing onto Route 108?
Yeah, yeah, because of the way the driveway's set up, which is the way I do it. I usually back over. We have like a turnaround spot on the southern end of the driveway that we use to get out of the driveway ourselves, because all the years we've lived there, we've never had a problem.
Yeah.
You know?
Luckily, it's a 35, but...
Right.
I live on Gale Village Road, so I understand what that's like right there.
Yeah, not only that, too, but I, whenever somebody comes over, and I usually will stand out there on the edge of the road and then go, okay, come on back out, you know? Because, you know, I know, when you come over that hill, you know?
Yeah.
At the last minute, you ain't got time to stop, you know? So...
So it's marked here with the customer parking in that area that you're describing would be a place to back and turn around. So I think maybe that ought to be not a customer parking area, that, you know, the customer parking should be further up the driveway and, you know, and then preserve that for backing around so that they can go out forward. So I'd take that customer parking section off?
Yes, and I think that's why... Do you understand what she said there? Yeah, and so it sounds like people would pull straight in, and then when they left, they would back, or somewhere like that. I don't know how we could make it as a condition as we discuss this of, you know, I don't know, I don't think that could be a condition that I could come up with.
No customer backing up?
Mike, you can just request that the site plan or the drawing be amended by that point.
Okay.
So just amend it by crossing that part out?
Effectively, yes.
Yeah. And as Jim suggested, you know, customers not to back out onto 108? That would mean that they have to turn around.
That's fairly hard to enforce.
Yeah, that would be a tough one.
It's very hard to enforce.
Very hard to enforce, but it would be an intent so that, it'd be awesome, yeah, it wouldn't be a matter more of enforcement, but if there were an accident because somebody tried to back out instead, they would be having a hard time getting coverage.
Can we have a sign put up so that it recommends that the drivers that are leaving pull out in the correct way? Is that something that we can...
It's kind of suggesting to follow the law.
Yeah.
Yeah. What I'm, because this is recorded, and so I put a lot of consideration in what you say and hold people to what they say. So I'm going to listen to you right now, tell me how you're, that you're going to intend to make sure people only exit back on to Route 108 facing out or however that. I've already heard you say that.
Well, I'm assuming that I'm not going to have 10 or 15 customers at the same time. You know, it's probably going to be one and then one and then one and then one like that. So each time a sale is made, I'm going to tell them at the same time, I'm going to walk them out, and I'm going to say, I'm going to back you over to here, and then I'm going to have you head north on 108 rather than going south, which is what I tell all my friends to do, you know? It's safer.
Yeah. Now, Ziggy, you're familiar somewhat with that. Is there a way that you could bring people in where when they park, they're already essentially going to be facing in the right direction? Because that's going to lead people to drive around that way.
Well, the thing is, is if somebody pulls in parallel with the driveway, they just got to back up a little bit and then pull out. Whereas if somebody pulls in facing the house, they will back over into that turnaround spot and then pull out.
Okay.
I think most people would rather go forward, turn around and go out.
Yes.
You know? Most people would not choose to back out onto 108, so...
Right.
Yeah. I'm happy with his statement of intent.
And then a question was brought up on the table, and because that's not listed, well, there's two things that the board has to decide. Is it okay that it's outside, because it would be visible? So that would be a, you know, it's not any kind of a variance, it's just a decision that we have to make. And then I would suggest a, that you tell us, give us a maximum size of the table. And then at least that would be a consistent, what we could, what could be measured.
Yeah. I didn't think to measure the table, but it's...
May I make a comment?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Barbara. I kind of, I got to learn that there's people out there virtually. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I just wanted to remind the board that they had another sort of similar home occupation in March, and they allowed them to have it as long as nothing was visible from the road. They made them put everything around the rear of the house to conform to the ordinance.
Right, yep. Thank you. That would be tricky in this situation.
Yeah.
And I fully agree referencing that one, Barbara. However, yes, that would be kind of impossible for this one. Although your hours are much more restrictive.
Yeah, and the only thing that's outside that would be, would not be there during the week is the sign and the table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think having the table, I mean, just between 12 and 6 or...
Right.
I don't know if you're going to leave it at 12 to 6, but if, just between 12 and 6, that the table's able to be out there and then be put away, but it's not just kind of left out in the yard.
Right. Well, that's the reason why I was going to use a fold-up table, because I can fold it right up and take it right inside.
Okay. So we can, you can leave it as a fold-up table, or you can give us a maximum size of the table, you know, like a...
I mean, I would say it's probably about the same length as that, other than the fact that's a not fold-up table.
Yeah, okay.
You know, so each section's...
Five feet? Eight feet? I'll say eight feet.
That's about eight feet, yeah.
Yeah. But don't worry about that. We'll just...
I actually think it might be a six-foot table.
That one looks...
Yeah, this one's a five-foot, so it's...
Okay.
Yeah.
It's probably closer to six.
Okay. So the first thing, yes.
Just a suggestion that if you guys want to go with the table, it's okay, but the table can be a maximum of eight feet, but must be removed when not, when the business is not in operation. And then you'll have the business hours being the Saturday, Sunday, 12 to 6, if that's what it ends up being.
Okay, thank you. Yep, that's what I'm... So firstly, it sounds like the board's okay with the table out there during business hours?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay. So then I would go with what Ms. Rowden said. Again, I like to make it a little bit more than you're asking for when it, when it works. So we'll say not to exceed eight feet. And it will be removed during non-business hours.
Right.
Okay.
And are you only interested... And for the weekends, are you looking to also include holidays during the summertime or something like that?
It's just on Saturdays and Sundays.
Just on Saturdays and Sundays.
Because I work for FedEx during the week, so, you know, I can't very well do it during the week.
Right. I didn't know if it was like 4th of July or...
If it falls on a weekend, yeah.
Okay, but if it doesn't?
Right.
You're not interested, okay.
Because FedEx works seven days a week, so, like I said, if I didn't have to take care of her, I could work Saturday and Sunday if I wanted to, you know? And that's the only reason why I'm not, you know? Most of us, most of us are required to work six days a week for them. You know, it's not an option. And luckily, my boss, he understands my situation and, you know, he's always willing to work with me.
That's nice.
That's great.
Yeah, he's probably the best boss I've ever had.
I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that you consider asking, so that, let's assume your business takes off and you're just having great, great business, and you got people wanting to pick up lobsters to have lunch or to go to a cookout someplace or something like that. I'd suggest that you extend your hours maybe from 10 till 6. That way you don't have to come back here and ask us to extend them if that, if you find that you want that.
The reason why I went 12 to 6 is it gives me time to go over and get the stock, get back and get set up, you know?
Okay.
Setting up my table and, you know, getting things where I want them in the house and everything. And people are coming in the door, you know? Are coming to the door.
Okay. I'm just trying to help you as we have, to have as much flexibility as possible to expand.
I mean, it's fine with me.
Yeah.
If we changed it to that, it's fine with me. I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that I have to be open.
Yeah, you don't have to. It's just if you were going to do anything other than noon to 6, you'd have to come back here.
Right.
And for something...
So if you go, if you go 10 to 6, you don't have to stay open till 6 if you're all sold out?
Right.
You know? There's nothing, nothing making you do it.
Right.
Okay. 10 to 6?
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
All right. So the conditions that I, and add something if I haven't got it. Hours would be 10 to 6. The outside table is allowed no larger than eight feet long and to be removed during non-business hours. Is there any...
Mike, you still have to have the public hearing.
We didn't discuss the sign, where you're going to put it?
On the hill before by driveway, so that it can be seen.
Okay, so kind of like a...
It actually looks like a real estate sign.
Okay. So you have campaign signs.
Campaign, yeah, campaign signs.
Jen, did you make a comment?
Yes, you still have to have the public comment period. I suspect no one else is there, but I can't see that for sure.
There's nobody here, but I will open it up to the public if there's any comment. Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay. So that square is...
You need jurisdiction.
That would be good. May I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we take jurisdiction of this application.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and second. All those in favor, just signify by saying aye or raise your hand or...
Aye.
Oh, it has to be roll call. Okay, call the roll, please, Jim.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
And Mr. Marshon.
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Zalinski, Mr. Lavoy showed up.
No problem.
Oh. I was just going to ask if I'm... Okay, so that makes sense to me. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I...
It just happens automatically? You don't need to...
Exactly.
It does. Because, yeah, because I had appointed Ziggy to take your place.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So unanimous.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, since, are there any further discussion or questions on this? Okay, can I have a motion to approve with the conditions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application with the following conditions: that it be open for business on Saturdays and Sundays from 10 till 6; that the signage and table be removed during non-business operating hours; and that the table be not exceed eight feet in length.
Can I, just one question on that. The hours not to exceed 10 to 6, because it almost like we were telling you when to have them.
Okay.
The signage...
Can stay up?
That can stay up, correct?
Legally, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Because you might want some advertising. So I'm going to amend that where the signage isn't in the vote at all.
I'd accept that amendment, yeah, yeah.
Your other items, no, they're standard to obtain all local and state permits, no outdoor storage, and no customers to back out onto 108.
Okay. Yep.
Good.
Don't worry, you'll get it all in right.
Was the size of the signage discussed? Or is that...
Couldn't hear you what?
Was the size of the signage discussed? Because there is a zoning law for a certain, I think it's like you can't exceed two and a half feet or something?
Yeah, for this, for the home business.
Yeah, that's already automatically within the regulations.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
We need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do you have the full reading of all that? You don't have to read it, but do you have all the information?
Yes, yes. I just have to sort them into, press the into a side here.
Okay. Okay, then please call the roll.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Marshon.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to say, well, thank you for coming. You will, just to confirm for me, is there a business occupancy permit type? Is there further action with the building inspector?
No.
Or enforcement? No?
No.
Okay. All right. We can't answer if there are any state, local, or federal permits you have to do?
I actually have the...
No, it already has.
Yeah, I have a fish and game permit.
Okay. All right. That's fine. All we can say is you have to get them. We don't know what they all are, so that's...
That was like the first things I looked into.
Yeah, so that's on you, and whether that's the only permit you need...
A short agenda tonight.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Goat.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and good luck with your, with your mom, too.
Good luck with it.
I'll get in touch with you when I have him sign the notice of decision. All right. I'll call it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 7:29. Okay. Board, Business and Correspondents, can I have a motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting, July 13, please?
Make a motion to accept. I'll second.
This is Barbara, I'll second.
Barbara will second. Okay.
Can I just ask a question, since I was not here last time? I did read the minutes, and I think it's great that as long as there's a majority of the board in person, that people can participate via Zoom, how does that get coordinated?
Let's finish...
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moran, I couldn't hear most of what you said.
Well, I guess we'll talk about it in a second.
Yeah, I'll bring that up, it's not on the agenda, but it's always good to say. So we have a motion and a second, to accept the minutes. Call the roll please.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
There's no Neper manifest.
There is, okay. In place of Neper manifest, I'm gonna have a quick discussion with the members who are here and on Zoom pertaining to your question. Because tonight, we're like, close, okay? We, and we didn't know if you guys were coming or not. What I would propose is that as soon as you know for sure, a week prior would be really good by then. Please let Jim know if you, if you're going to attend, but not just if you're gonna miss, but if you're going to attend also, and if you have to attend only via Zoom. Okay? Because we are allowed to hold it, these hybrids, but we must have a quorum in place for that's, that's four for us.
Is everybody getting, when I send out the agenda and the minutes on Thursdays prior to the meeting? I put a reminder in there, not nagging people, but I say, you know, please remember to let me know by Monday if you're not gonna be able to be at a meeting. Will people not take offense?
No, it's just tonight was an emergency for me, so do we have a protocol for if there's like a personal emergency?
That would just be either letting Jim know or?
Yeah, what should I?
Me, like, yeah, because?
I can let you know too.
Yeah, you know, if you gotta, and if you're gonna be like, I'm gonna be walking in the door right at 7 or I can't get there until, you know?
With the information I had, I didn't know if I was gonna be able to make it, which is why?
Yeah, that's, that's why if we have most everybody, then it's not like, one last minute emergency doesn't make us lose the quorum.
Yes.
Here in person.
Yep.
So.
I'd like my fellow board members to know that I will be attending via Zoom for August and September. So that puts a little bit of extra pressure on everybody else to be physically present. Sorry, but that's just the way it is.
Oh, that'd happen. Now I don't remember getting that, Jim.
Mr. Chair, may I, may I?
Sure.
Interject that I am also going to be attending by Zoom.
Okay.
So?
So we'll, we'll know that.
I'll make my best effort, but I have a baby coming between now and September.
Yeah, that's all we?
Congratulations.
So we can coordinate as early as possible.
Yeah.
You know, because if, if by chance we don't, we just can't have a quorum here? I'd like to know prior to sitting down and we have to, you know, we cancel. And that just, that'll happen sometimes, but, okay. That's everything on the agenda is?
Could I ask what we have coming up for the next meeting? I think you had said there were going to be quite a few.
See the stack of paper on the corner of the table?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be giving those out later. Do not leave the building until you have your paperwork.
So can you run through what they are, just so?
At the next meeting, there is the public hearing on the master plan. There's a four-lot subdivision from 125 Development for Puzzle Lane. There's a lot line adjustment and then there's a condo conversion.
Okay, okay.
So documents from the condo conversion have gone to our lawyer for review. I'm handing out paperwork tonight because literally I don't want to have to make boxes like I had to. Some people last year got codboarded, strange constructions with plenty of tape on them because there's just so much paperwork.
Okay.
The four-lot subdivision, that's the one that we, that we seized, that we, that we?
That expired.
It expired.
Well, it, yeah, we didn't, we decided not to renew it anymore, to continue it anymore?
No, it just expired on its own, it's not made out.
Yeah, we didn't, we don't, we can't renew it unless it was requested from the applicant. I'm getting these mixed up.
I believe, as I recall, is that the same one as the one that we decided not to continue anymore?
No.
No.
Okay, this is a, this is a different one?
This is one from approximately a year ago now.
Okay.
It went through, it has a very small lot, a huge lot and then two kind of average-sized lots.
Okay.
It was approved with a whole bunch of conditions. None of the conditions were met and none of the conditions could be met.
Okay, okay. Okay, I did look in our, our old minutes from a few, a few months ago?
Be careful how far you want to discuss a project coming up because we can't do that right now.
I understand. I just wanted to clarify, we have, we had something in our minutes from about a month and a half or two months ago or something where we did not continue, we, we voted not to continue again, one of, one of the applications without prejudice. And then we had discussion that if it were to come as an application again, that we would waive a fee. We didn't make a motion to waive a fee and I wonder if we need to?
Well, it was, no, it was inappropriate at the time and that would be something that would be discussed once we actually took jurisdiction. And it was a project.
Yeah, and if the applicant would need to request a waiver from the application fees, they could certainly bring up that the planning board had previously discussed or considered it, but it, no motion was ever made to that discussion, it couldn't have been.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure of which one and that we had, had our ducks in a row about that and that we know which one it is.
That was the 36-awatt application.
Right.
There was nothing, that kind of discussion was set about this because that wasn't, that was approved.
Right.
It was finished out, it was closed out.
No, that's very clear, I just wasn't sure which ones were which. So, thank you.
Mike, I have a quick question and stop me if this is inappropriate or whatever, because you know me.
Okay.
It's about the email that Jim transposed for the rest of us to see. I was wondering how that fared about the collection of the funds?
Oh, actually, I received a check the next day.
Oh, okay.
When he, when one of the engineers brought in an application, the first thing he handed me was the check of the year average.
That one, but then there was the other one where you kind of got that letter requesting that the money be?
Where it was supposed to be sent to, that's ongoing.
Okay.
That's ongoing, so.
I can inform the board if they want to know.
Right.
Okay.
The checks were mailed to the person who submitted the funds to the board.
Right, like should be.
That person has now returned them to the board and said, I'd rather not deal with this, you supply these to the client. However, the town cannot do that.
So it's with the town treasurer mostly with, trying to have Jim not involved?
Yep.
As best as possible.
This board did everything that it is legally required to do.
Right.
Okay, seeing no further business, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 7:38. And I think the shower went by.